You need to order?
Dr. Deegan, pledge.
Salute pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Call and roll please.
Ms. Clark, here.
Ms. Knarmer. Here.
Mr. Sharon. Dr. Bridges.
Here.
And Mr. Jester.
Here.
Colonel Curtis.
Here.
Dr. Deegan, do we have special guests?
Yes, we do, and I am extremely proud to, um, for us to have this visitor today. And we all know what, uh, this is the equivalent of having a state teacher of the year. What we have this year is our very own Mr. James Suttles has been selected as the Oklahoma Education Association Support Professional of the Year. And so I've invited him to the board meeting tonight so we can brag on him. And in order to do the main part of the bragging, I'll have his principal, Mr. Eddie Williams, come to the podium.
Thanks very much. And good evening to the distinguished board members and Superintendent Deegan. I'm Eddie Williamson, head principal at Tomlinson Middle School. Without doubt, best middle school. But it's with great honor and privilege to introduce a person whom I have deep respect and admiration for. Mr. James Suttles is the number one custodian assistant at Tomlinson Middle School. He has just completed his 28th year of service for LPS and has been a member of TMS team for over 10 years. Recently, Mr. Suttles was recognized by the Oklahoma Educators Association for a highly distinguished award. The ESP award, not ESPN, ESP, is presented to an individual education support professional member whose activities reflect the contributions of the educational support professional to public education. The purpose of the award is to recognize an individual who shows outstanding accomplishments in one of more of the following areas. There are four areas. Number one, innovation to support the day, today, uh, educational process. Number two, professional achievements in his or her job classification. Three, involvement in promoting public education in the community. And four, enhancement of education support professionals' image in the association, work site, or the community. Mr. Suttles has excelled in each of those areas and has always been a big contributor in giving back to the Lawton-Fortsill community. James, also known as Coach Suttles, to the kids, is the TMS varsity basketball coach. He's a TMS track coach, and he's also contributed as an AAU coach for girls and boys' basketball for over 28 years. Mr. Suttles helps children of Lawton stay off the streets during the summer months and actually throughout the whole year. He doesn't do this for monetary reasons. He does it because his heart is moved for the youth in our community. He says he does it because he loves the game of basketball. But his primary purpose is keeping our kids safe and teaching them the value of becoming true team players. Mr. Suttles even coached my two children when they were growing up and had a very positive impact on their lives. It's a family affair with Mr. Suttles. He is married and has three kids of his own. His wife, Ms. Ann Suttles, she's not here today. What do you think she's doing?
Coaching.
Exactly. Okay. She often helps him with keeping game books and travels with him to most of the games. Mr. Suttles is extremely dependable and can always be counted on to go the extra mile. I don't think the word "no" is in his vocabulary. The staff at Tomlinson Middle School absolutely loves him. In addition, Mr. Suttles has a CDL driver's license and volunteers on numerous occasions to drive our students to many events on his own personal time. His team of custodians help keep TMS second to none in terms of beautification, cleanliness, and maintenance upkeep. I invite each and every one of you, take a little time out of your busy day and come visit Tomlinson. And I don't think you'll be disappointed. Without a doubt, OEA got it right when they selected Mr. James Suttles as the OEA 2017 Oklahoma Support Personnel of the Year. And with that, Mr. Suttles is also now a finalist for the National OEA 2017 Support Personnel of the Year Award, which will be awarded or announced at a later date. No doubt about it, if he doesn't win it, he's going to be very close. Distinguished board members, Mr. James Suttles. Hey, miss, don't forget, let me just give you a glimpse of that.
Oh. Well, if you haven't saw it, here it is. Uh, thank you, board members. Thank you, everyone that's here. I look around and I see people here that, kids, that I have coached. Oh, there, yes. Wonderful. It's a support personnel, so I want to thank all the custodians, secretaries, cooks, support people. Without them, I'm pretty sure, there's no way I could have done this by myself. I just stayed focused on the kids. I stayed focused on my job. And I just combined it for 28 years, and I would never turn nothing back. It is fun. How it got started, my dad used to do the same thing here. And I was growing up as a teenager, finished school, didn't know what I was going to do. He said, "Son," and he's not here with, with us now, you know, he passed away 15 years ago, but he said, "Uh, you ought to help me coach, rest, be with the kids." I said, "Nah, Dad, man, that ain't, that ain't, that ain't for me. That's for you. I, I watch you do it." He said, "Oh, you'll have fun. I guarantee you'll have fun." I said, "No." One year later, 28 years later, I never stopped. And I want to thank him, you know, I just want to just thank him. And, uh, it's a wonderful thing. It's a very wonderful thing. And I want to just thank you, every last one of you people. Mr. Williams, again, uh, family, uh, 28 years. We've been together, and I just want to just thank everyone. I just love the people in the LBS school system who gave me and my family an opportunity to give back. I want to say thank you. Appreciate it.
Way back when, not too long after you had started, he would actually organize tournaments here so that the kids, the younger basketball teams, would actually have tournaments here that we could play to. And many, many times, we were here to play against you and, and, uh, and do what we could to help you if there was anything you needed.
Is it, is it true, it was kind of hard to beat me?
Oh, not kind of. Not kind of. I think we held one city championship, and I think we slipped one by you. I don't think you had a fifth grade team that year.
Nah.
And I've never heard you called Mr. Suttles, so it was always Coach Suttles.
Yeah. I don't even know my first name. I really don't. I, I, I really don't.
That's great.
And you know, I, I want to thank my wife also because, you know, without her, um, who's going to take care of my mom? You know, when Dad passed away, I took my mom in, and she'd been living with me for 15 years now. And so my wife is also a big part of this. She's also, which I'm not afraid to say, my backbone. Okay? So I'm not afraid to say that. So, uh, but yes, those tournaments that I had, it was all for the basketball program at Tomlinson Middle School.
Yep.
So we can buy new uniforms.
Yeah.
And, um, so I want to say thank you for coming.
Oh, we had many, many times. And if you've never been around Mr. Suttles very much, he almost always will have a smile on his face, no matter how hard we try to make it for you.
Yeah.
And you, back in the day.
Yes.
I love your Burger King, Burger King coupons. Yes. I was able to pass them out to my basketball team, you know, and they had so much fun. Like, "Coach, come give me some more Burger King."
I want to thank you because I, I was involved with all the girls because my daughter played.
Yes.
Stew.
Yes.
Scoring her a little. Yeah. But the, the number of kids that I personally saw that you kind of guided down the right track. I mean, you kept them busy, and that was so important if, because they'd have been out just hanging out. But it gave them something to do, and you think about all the kids' lives that you.
Yes, ma'am.
Indirectly or, or directly.
28 years, over a couple hundred kids a year.
And all the college scholarships. I mean, my daughter never would have continued if she hadn't had the acclaim that she did at the AAU group.
Amen.
Amen.
Right there. The last one that actually played with me and went through and got to high school, so good to see her go. Because I remember she played with me for four years, and I say, "This is what you got to do." You know, I'm sorry, I'm turning into a coach now, but yes, hard work pays off.
Yes, it does.
It's what I tell the kids right now. Don't stop. Don't give up. If it's not working out for you now, if you don't give up, it'll come back to you. And you will know exactly what to do and know how to handle it. Even with basketball and life put together, I try to combine them so they, so they can have an understanding of what I'm talking about. And it's a fun thing. Uh, so, thank you. Ah, I forgot my, my lady over there.
Thank you for all that you said.
Thank you. Much love.
And Ms. Suttles and Ms. Williams, you're welcome to stay, of course, but you're also free to go if you have other things you want to do.
Want to get to the gym?
Yeah. But thank you all for coming.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
We're very proud. Very proud.
Okay. Departmental reports?
Under 5A, we just have the business and service educational updates, the printed reports. And if the board doesn't have any questions, I'll move on to item 5B. For item 5B, we have Mr. Kyle Smith under, he's going to bring, we did a, um, a pilot program with LATS Transportation starting in January. So this will be the first full semester report. So Mr. Smith, Mr. Cook, and Mr. Landers will be kind of updating us on how that's going for the semester.
Yes, we started this program back in January to give every LPS student with an ID the ability to ride the LATS bus at any time during the first semester from January through the end of June.
Secondary.
Secondary, excuse me, secondary, um, through January through the end of June of this year. And, um, Mr. Landers has brought some ridership numbers to share with us about how many LPS riders that we had. And then Mr. Cook has some information on, you know, kind of what benefits that we got from the ridership from the LATS program. So at this time, I'll let Mr. Landers come and talk about that.
Good evening. Thank you for having me. As Kyle had said, this has been a really good program right from the get-go, and it's gotten better every single month. So far, in the first five months of service, we've actually had almost close to 20,000 riders, which is great. And I think it can only get better. Right now, we've kind of really depended on kind of the word-of-mouth type of thing. We work with the communications department here, and I think we can do even more. Last year, once everything got finalized, it was kind of towards the latter end, and so it took some time to get the, you know, the word out. But it's been a great experience for us. We have, and I'm not joking about this, zero complaints from the drivers, from the students. Actually, we get a lot of feedback from the drivers that the kids act kind of like adults on the bus, which is great. So I think it's been, it's been a great thing, and I think it can only improve from here. So, um, you know, if you have any questions with that.
So have you, oh, sorry, go ahead. I'm sorry. Go ahead. Okay. My question was, when I, when we started this, I asked how we were going to keep up with the numbers, and they were doing by, just going to have to do it by marking them. Is that how you did it? We didn't have no official tally system or?
Right now, we actually have a separate tally system, and so basically, they just show their ID, and we just kind of mark down how many we have on each, each route. And I have those individual route statistics. Our yellow route was actually our most popular route, which was a little surprising. That's kind of our.
Where is that?
East-west, and I think it's probably closer to the east side that we're actually thinking with that. We haven't kind of gone deep into those numbers, but the yellow route has been our most important route or biggest route. Probably, it's accounted for almost 33% of that 20,000, so.
That was kind of one of my questions.
I just wondered, have we ever thought about, and of course, I'm new to this whole thing, but thought about opening that up to employees?
That's actually a good question. We, um, we actually started doing that the last week in April and the first two weeks in May, just to kind of see. The last week in April, we had 30 riders, and the last two weeks of May, we actually increased that to 70. So it, it got the word out, I think, again, once we get a little bit more publicity out there. One of the things, or feedbacks that we did get throughout the time, some parents still didn't know that they could use the service. So I think, again, with more time, we'll get even more. I mean, we've kind of set a goal for next year as to increase it from, you know, the 20,000, almost 25, 30% more. And I think it's a doable mark. And I said, the students love it, and yeah.
What would it cost a student to ride if they, we wouldn't have had this free service form? What was, what's the cost per?
$1. $1 per trip.
Okay. Per trip, one way?
Yes.
Okay.
I see him standing at bus stops in the mornings, though. Somebody's driving.
Yeah. I think that's been the encouraging thing, the, like I said, January was kind of the, the first month. And one of our biggest months was actually the spring break month. It was our highest ridership, even though we had a whole week where no one, you know, went to school. And so I think people are taking advantage of it a little bit more. I think May was a little bit lower. First week after school break, everyone's going on vacation, you know, slowing down a little bit. You know, I think July, I don't know, just pick up a little bit more, getting more into work, all kinds of different things.
Did we have any issues with elementary students trying to get on? Because I know that was something we discussed originally.
No, we didn't. The conversation did get brought up. What we kind of came up with is that if there is someone that wants to ride either with their older sibling or someone that, you know, to come by LATS and we'll figure out kind of a plan, that never really came to fruition. So, um, we just kind of left it alone. Again, it's still an option if, if need be, but.
Okay. I'm pleasantly surprised. I'm glad to find out that that many kids and stuff are took.
Absolutely.
And use it on the weekends as well.
Yeah. Any day of the week, they can ride, so.
That's kind of a big deal.
Yeah.
All right.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
As far as our transportation department, we've used it through Gateway for most of the year, and it's been a positive for us. We usually have seven buses out there to transport that number of students. And with the help of LATS, we've taken away six of those buses, which we still currently have one out there. But six of those buses have been repurposed to help transport LPS students. And also, we do see a difference in our eighth-hour busing. It's taken care of some of the overcrowding, and we've seen some positives with this program.
Are there any negatives that you've seen?
Well, I, no, not that I see. I don't see any negatives with it, so.
You didn't say, you were able to repurpose six of seven buses?
Six out of seven that were used, that we were using on the Gateway program. So we were used to. 100%, yes, it is. It's significant for us, so.
So as far as Gateway goes, is there a stop right there at the building? A LATS stop?
Oh, okay. Right out front. Okay.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And we've been using LATS for Gateway for three years now. So we, we buy, before this program, we bought semester passes for any Gateway students so they could get on the, the LATS bus at that time. So we've been getting the benefit from that for several years now. After-school activities, of course, students that play sports, are in band, if there's a play going on they're practicing for, we've seen some use from those type of students that don't have transportation of their own to, to get back and forth from home and school. So it has been a positive benefit to us. Having talked, having talked to Ryan and his LATS employees, they have made a proposal to continue the program for next school year for the same price that we paid this last semester. $35,000 a semester, $70,000 for the school year. For you to take under consideration as you wish. If there's any other questions?
I, I do have a question. He noted that there were 20,000 riders, but what does that mean? Is that one-way trips?
Yes. There would not be. And, and we don't have any way of counting. It could be the same student riding it three, four times during the day. We don't know that it's four separate students riding it. So we're averaging about 4,100.
So really, mine, I'll be 20,000 riders, it's 20,000.
Times their own.
One, one trip.
That's right.
Okay.
That's right.
All right.
So we'll review that on a later date, right?
Yeah, we don't have a proposal yet. We just wanted to make sure if the board had any questions or really if there's any data that you'd like us to bring forth when we do bring a proposal to help you understand it better. You know, we've got summer months in the play here. So when we do bring that proposal to you, we want to make sure if there's any questions you wanted to have.
Okay. My question was, this semester went from January to July.
June.
The end of June. To the end of June, so we're, so we got one month. So let's get the statistic for the end of the month and see how close we hit to that third one.
We can definitely do that. Ryan's happy to share all the information that they've gathered, and at the end of June, he'll have the full May month to gather, and then all of June, and he can bring that back to you.
What was April and March, for example?
April's ridership was 4,389.
And do you have March?
March was 4,637, and it's averaged out to about 4,100 riders this, a month.
82 plus 21. So. Thank you. Thanks.
Thank you all.
We need Kyle again?
Yes. Under item 5C, we have Kyle again.
You don't get to leave yet.
And you know, this, this, we've discussed the RFQ process and what I wanted to. And thank you all. Thank you.
Thank you again.
We've discussed the RFQ process. I just wanted the board to have an opportunity to see what one looked like. And really, we're not taking an action on RFQ process.
It takes, it'd put us off another, what, two months, three months?
Well, yeah. But in the future, if we do move forward, we're going to have to, we, we, I just wanted you to be able to see one and consider it. If there are any questions, ideas, or thoughts you have into pursuing it, once we do in the future, or if we were to now, I want at least the board to have an opportunity to look at what the RFQ looks like and see a chance to review it. Make suggestions, thoughts, ideas. And of course, if you wanted to go with RFQ right now on this group of projects we're considering, that's an option as well. But I just wanted to make sure the board had an opportunity to look at the RFQ and what it entailed. And Mr. Smith, if you want to go ahead and kind of outline what the basics of an RFQ process are.
Yeah. And basically, you know, I brought.
Yeah, and, and basically, you know, brought this to you, uh, back in April and went over the whole procedure. I researched and did a book, uh, about it, uh, I have in my office, um, about asking architects to give us their qualifications for different projects that they've done. We would have a committee set up of LPS staff that would review that and then we'd make a decision about, uh, what architect we'd wanna use. I recommended at that time and, and also about this time last year in June, that, uh, if we did RFQ, I would suggest we do it for larger projects. If we're gonna build a new Eisenhower Middle School, definitely do RFQ and bring in several architects and have them give us their qualifications and make a decision from there. For smaller projects, we have, uh, you know, our in-house, um, architect, AIP, um, is one that we use and, uh, they have a great knowledge of our district, having done, you know, uh, probably ninety percent of our projects in the last, uh, five years. BWA, of course, has done some of our larger projects with Central Middle School and Freedom, um, but, uh, they have a great knowledge already. Gonna be some cost savings, uh, to using them in the HVAC and roofing projects that we're looking at doing, um, for the coming school year. Also met, um, with Cory Miller from AIP this last week, Kent Ledford and I. Steve Dyer went out and reviewed, uh, MacArthur High School's remodeling of their cafeteria and looked at that, kinda get some ideas about what costs would be there and we'll get that information to you as soon as, uh, we get that all gathered up and into a report.
Do you know how long that took, approximately?
How long it would take?
Get some preliminaries?
It would be a wild guess. If I, you know, I would say, for the most part, eight to twelve months. You did, for, for different parts, you know, we're, we're looking at cosmetics, uh, paint, flooring, ceiling.
Oh, yeah, no, I'm not talking about to finish, I'm talking about give us a preliminary, uh, you know, timeframe to-
Timeframe for all the projects?
No, just to get you an estimate on, on-
Oh, for that, oh, no, I'm sorry, I, I misunderstood. Yes, he, he hopes to have that within the next couple of weeks.
Oh, okay.
I would think that we would have that by July at the latest.
Okay.
So, yeah, that's, that can be coming, on that. So, um, you know, basically, uh, if you'd like to do an RFQ project, as we discussed last time on these, uh, RFQ for architects on these, we're talking about a six-to-eight week delay in, in getting this started, 'cause we'd have to give RFQs out to different architects.
I think the concern was, um, with this number of projects, we just wanted to make sure that it wouldn't delay it by using just one firm.
Sure.
I think that was our main concern. Not that we necessarily, or that was my main concern, I'll just speak for me.
Yeah.
Sorry. Um, so, but I think that when Cory spoke to us, he kind of alleviated those concerns, so.
Yeah, and I, and I do believe that they can get these projects done as quick as, as anybody that we can get at this point with their knowledge of our district.
Did we talk about, um, when we, and I don't know, uh, since they're the ones we've pretty much used, we have, did we talk about, uh, having some projects maybe looked at by another company to see, make sure-
Well, that's what we're talking about.
That's what we would-
Right.
If we did an RFQ, that's the process.
Oh, I see. I understand that.
And again, I have no complaints with AIP. I think they've, they've, they've done a great job in everything we've asked them to do. I just wanna make sure the board had an opportunity before we move too further to decide whether or not we, don't even pursue it anymore for this set of projects.
Okay, well, now I know what we're up to.
Yeah, yeah, it's a request for qual, for qualifications. And, uh, with architect firms, they charge a percentage every one. There's not a money-saving by putting RFQs out.
Pretty much the same.
Yeah, that's pretty much all the same. It's just whether or not you depend upon them and, and appreciate the work they do and whether they meet your needs is basically why you'd do RFQ to see-
You have to do your homework and make sure they follow through on things a lot, yes.
And that would be my concern, too, if we chose somebody, especially for these smaller projects, you know, um-
They are being asked.
What, what is their past experience, um, and what, you know, would that slow us down? Those type of things would be a concern.
Did he have any update on the Ron Stevens?
He did have an update.
That's what I heard.
Yeah, I, I would see that. I don't think I shared it with Russell.
No, but it's not on the agenda. It's not on the agenda.
No, well, I would not be reviewing this.
That's why he smiled.
Yeah.
I don't think we'll do anything about that yet.
I'm just making sure that it got to-
Yeah.
Somebody else.
If it turns on item five C, then we'll move to five D.
Thank you.
And let me preface that, I listed the projects here exactly backwards. Uh, the roof projects are John Adams and Edison and the HVAC projects are MacArthur Middle School, Woodland Hills, Lincoln Elementary, and John Adams. And so I listed them exactly the opposite of what they should've been and, and it's amazing, once you look at these over and over again, that, I talked to Mr., Mr. Wade, we don't have a, a contract, we don't have a, um, purchase order. The, really, the discussion is, uh, we've been talking about this, we've had several, really, we, we, um, the discussion really wants direction from the board, um, on whether or not we wanna go ahead and commission the architect. Um, and at this point, I think it'd be AIP would be the ones we'd ask, um, to go ahead and, and start preparing these, we'd get them on the, um, agenda to be approved for July first and move forward. No matter when we do them, somebody's gonna have to prepare the plans, 'cause these are all projects that would require an architect. And so, on item five D, the, the question early before the board is, um, do we wanna go ahead and take that critical next step? No matter what order we do it, when are we doing it, we have to do this at some point, so I, I think it's a good idea to move forward.
Are we doing this with money we have?
This-
It's just asking for the-
We have the money in the bank to pay the architects for this fee right now. So, we wouldn't be incurring any future-
Okay.
So, yes, we pay for this as we go.
Okay.
It's gotta be done at some point and this will give us a very clear idea of what expense it's gonna be.
So, you're ready to entertain a motion?
I would recommend on item five D, and if you have any question for Mr. Smith, I asked him to come, but I'd recommend on five, five D that, that we just move forward and I don't know if that's an action item or-
I don't know that that's an action item.
It is, it's actions, it's possible actions.
It's possible actions.
If we're only, we're just saying to move forward, we're not approving.
Right. And what I'll do is I'll get contracts ready for it.
Missioning for the architect.
Yeah, we're moving forward. I'd, I'd like to make a motion that we go ahead and contract with AIP to get these projects going.
Okay, that's it.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Call her all, please. Ms. Claude Felter?
Yes.
Ms. Nyworth?
Yes.
Dr. Bridges?
Yes.
Mr. Jester?
Yes.
We'll take care of that, thank you.
I did.
Thank you.
Yeah, and Captain, please note that I have the roof and the HVAC backwards, but the contracts that were approved with the architect were-
All the words were there.
Yes. And the correction list actually has raw and high comments and then they're not included, so. We even, but, I, I even got the correction list wrong, so I apologize.
Ms. Purges?
Hi. Ms. Ellis is approaching, so. She's ready, let's move, come on. Dr. Deegan, could you hurry up? Ellis is ready.
Believe me, she, she carries a lot of authority. Well, Mr. Suddles, we, we don't argue with Ms. Ellis.
The calendar again, oh boy. Now, I'm just-
So, under item five D, Ms. Ellis has a, a small revision to the calendar she'd like to present.
Unfortunately, on revision number two, we have professional day four, which was originally scheduled for March second, rescheduled to March sixteenth. It's a very minor change. It indicates that the children were originally scheduled to be on March second, but now they'll be on the sixth day during professional day four, the educators. Can I ask that you approve of it, please?
I still have.
A second. Call her all, please. Ms. Claude Felter?
Yes.
Ms. Nyworth?
Yes.
Dr. Bridge?
Yes.
Mr. Jester?
Yes.
Okay. Item five F, this is a discussion of possible actions regarding development of policy for broadcasting live streaming of school events and activities. Um, I'd ask Ms. Ellis to, to attend, to stand in to make sure she hears the word suggestions, comments, and ideas. Here's the process we went through. Um, I met with Ms. Ellis, Ms. Cordis, and Mr. Moore, um, asked them to search among their school districts and contacts for a policy that covers this sort of thing. Came up dry, we didn't find any. And so then we contacted OSSBA and went through Julie Miller. Um, we asked her to search for a policy that met what I, what I, I think the board was at least shooting toward. Ms. Julie Miller, she's the, um, kinda OSSBA policy guru, she couldn't find any policies. So, what happened is, um, Julie has kinda drafted a starting point. So, what we have in the agenda under five F is not a policy, it's just a starting point that Julie Miller, as a policy expert, has decided would be a good place for the board to start its discussion. So, Ms. Ellis is here, Mr. Moore is here, Ms. Cordis is here, if the board has any questions for any of them, but we really wanna make sure that we, um, receive-
And this is the point we have to, we're not actually talking about adopting this tonight.
No. This is just a first rate and it's not even a draft at this point. This is a, just, let's just-
Let's get started.
Recommendation.
Not even a suggestion, we really wanted to hear what does the board want in this policy?
We just needed a starting place.
So, and so with the three or four of us listening, we'll, we'll be sure to get something out.
I'll start, 'cause I made notes, so. Um, in the, the third paragraph where it's talking about the superintendent or designee should serve as the liaison, I think that should probably be the athletic director. I don't think Dr. Deegan wants to do that.
The designee is usually the person that he assigns, which would be the athletic director.
So, can we just?
Would you like to change that language?
Yes.
To athletic director of that or designee or just athletic director?
I think it should be the athletic director.
I think it should be the athletic director.
I mean, if that's all we're-
Mr. Moore? What do you think?
I think the new athletic director should be.
This is on new.
Yeah.
Oh, I'm sure the athletic director's gonna keep the superintendent in the loop about what's going on.
Right, of course, but, so.
We have been the ones that have known, we've been bringing the broadcast for years, so.
And I think that's probably the way it should've been made.
I don't know, I, I would like to see a more clear definition of broadcasting. Um, I think in this request for proposal, um, example we were given, it talks about the difference between, um, a television reporter, a living radio reporter who's gonna do a little live broadcast to report on the results of the game or, you know, parts of the results of the game. And I think that maybe this broadcasting, live streaming of school events and activities, we may should have something that defines that that broadcaster or someone's broadcasting the full event and for the purpose of, of selling advertising. And I think that we should delineate, clear, make that clear, because I think the whole point of this is, is that we wanna do two things. We wanna protect the district and we wanna protect anybody that gets a contract with the district, uh, from having other people do the same thing without a contract. And if someone's in the stands and they're live streaming for Facebook just for their own, you know, entertainment, that's one thing, but if they're trying to sell advertising, then they don't have a contract with us and they're, you know, they, they can't do that. And so I think if we, if we define what broadcasting is, that can we then have a firm leg to stand on to keep others from, you know, just doing it on their own. And maybe it's not necessary, but I feel that about it.
I'm gonna back up a little bit and think-
Why do we need this policy since no one in the state has a policy on this? Why do we feel like we need one? That's my question.
Because we feel like we have trouble, um, keeping someone to a contract if we don't have a policy. So, we're contracting with people, but we don't have any policy to say exactly what we're doing. So, maybe they read a contract one way, maybe we feel like it says something completely different. Without a policy, I don't feel like we're on the same page.
Okay, so, so, I mean, so this is then what we have put forward?
Okay.
Um, my second question is, when we, um, we talk about this, um, live broadcasting, okay, but we talk about not being able to delay it?
Well, that's, that is a question I had.
Okay.
Because I don't know, like, I know on ESPN or whatever, they have like a nine-second delay. Is that what we're talking about? A delay like that or a delay to a later time or what are we talking?
It is simply language that she placed in there for your consideration. The, the delay amount of time would be up to you if you decided that you wanted to use it or not. It was a consideration that she simply thought might-
I would like to see that whole thing.
Well, let's ask Lynn, what, I mean-
That particular part, that delay, you cannot delay radio broadcast, but you can delay by nine seconds, thirty seconds, live TV, live streaming. That's what-
Is there a reason to? I mean, like, okay, yeah.
Yes, if, if somebody had, just go with user boards.
Okay.
If it says something inappropriate, you can cut the fee back to the station, hint on-
During the game.
They can cut their, they can pull it. Now, I mean, it's not much time for them to make some changes, especially if it hasn't happened. But that, and this particular policy is what it's referring to, is the delay in time from when it's live to a few more seconds.
That gives you the ability to do so, but with radio, they don't have that delay.
But TV you do and live streaming you do.
Oh, live streaming you do? So, it's really not live streaming? It's, it's nine-second delay?
Delayed. You have a nine-second, one to thirty-second, I believe, delay. That's what I'm going to do.
So, you got a nine-to-thirty-second delay, okay. So, what this, the way this is written, that could be, um, that could be delineated out in the contract, so we can even say you asked it-
What the delay has to be or whatever.
Right.
I think you could specify.
It could be specified in contract, right.
Okay. Because this was your concern, this paragraph?
Yes. And then in the, the part that's, I guess it's the one, two, three, fourth, contracts for broadcasting will include, and basically, I like that because that just says that all of these types of items will be determined by the contract.
Right.
And I think that's, that's good. Is there, is there a reason why we don't include gambling as one of the things that can't be advertised?
This is simply a draft for your-
We can add it.
I mean, I'm just wondering.
We can add that.
I'm just wondering if that's...
Because not everybody has casinos in their character.
Yeah. Is that...
Do you want to add that?
I don't know. I don't know, is it...
Well, do you, Apache Casino Hotel?
There's no reason you can't exclude that, just like the rest, yeah.
I don't know how the rest of the board feels about that.
I don't know, because, I mean...
I don't know if they have many, they want to give us...
Yeah, they, they...
So is gambling an appropriate thing to be advertising?
But there's a lot of times...
And they have their own restrictions.
And there's a lot of things that they...
Like their restaurant.
And their, um, we're having the, the, um, people come and sing and all that stuff. I'm not for sure that we've...
They, they have separated to ask that, like Apache Casino, because I was there today calling on them, trying to get some money. And they have separated, so even when you have a charge in their restaurant, it doesn't show up as a casino because the government contracts do not allow that.
I know.
So they have made an effort to separate the entertainment area and the hotel from the casino. So you have two different kind of entities working together up there.
But, I haven't said that. If you say imagination, you automatically drink.
Yeah, well, imagination, yeah, they don't have a hotel.
Or whatever.
Do you want to add that too? But that's something we could still think about.
I don't think it's, I don't personally think it's necessary. I think, I don't think that they are going to want to do that.
Right.
But if, if we don't add it, will that keep us from being able to deny it? What do you think, Chuck?
Lynn, do we currently advertise or allow them to advertise?
If we, if our students cannot patronize that facility...
They don't do it.
Cigarettes, smoking, smoke shops, we do not advertise, we do not share.
So they...
Now, if it's in the tribes, we just go by imagination, we go by the tribe. But if our students cannot go in, we do not.
So you just leave off the word casino?
Yeah, you would never...
Because I mean, they have water parks.
Right.
So specifically gambling activities?
Right.
We could, we could, we could include specifically gambling activities.
I'm not for sure.
I think we should include that as...
Okay, just...
I don't agree with that, I'm just agreeing.
We're not saying it, no.
You could allow them to advertise their restaurant or their...
Right, the water park.
The water park. Well, there ain't but gambling, gambling component.
We can address that.
Or you wouldn't need specifically. You would need to say specifically, you should exclude any reference to any type of form of gambling if you're going to allow the casinos to, or the tribes to...
Okay. Okay, go back to that because that's a question. Okay, so, um, when we're looking at the broadcast delays, the question is, are we talking about replays too? I don't know, like, um, you know how you watch the game and then on Saturday you can re-watch it?
Yeah, because LPS used to...
We used to replay when we did the football, but that wasn't because it's our channel. We own, we own those rights.
Right, but we, I mean, we wouldn't be owning these.
On that part of the page, it says something about that.
No reason to delay. No reason to delay that. If you're paying it back at a later time.
Well, I don't think she tells you that.
No, that's what I'm talking about. I'm talking about a replay.
Right.
A replay, yeah.
At a later time.
On the second page, item two. Pardon me, item one.
They're allowed to broadcast, they don't broadcast it about a event for a period of, so you could limit the period at which it could be broadcast.
Right, okay.
Or give, or not give the right, whichever the board determines.
Okay, are we, did you get your question answered before I gave you something different about the gambling part?
Yes.
Okay, so did we decide to add it?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, my question is on the insurance that we talk about here. Is that something that we need to have in here at all? Because we don't have a platform that they stand on, I mean, that was some of the things that we looked at. And obviously, I just don't see why we should, all we're going to do, make them give us like a bond?
Well, you have proof of workman's comp and you have proof that if somebody gets hurt while they're at our facility...
But what are they going to do?
If they don't have workman's comp, they'll sue us.
I mean, if they had a, I mean... Football's not probably the issue, like at a basketball game. They have to set up somewhere. They're going to set up a table or they're going to set up a camera or they will set up something.
So what are we going to, how are we going to decide how much insurance is, is the right provision for that?
I think one consideration is going to be what kinds of insurance do they carry is a normal course.
Okay.
Uh, we can make inquiry and find out those kind of issues real easy. The, uh, you know, I would think we would want to be insured from certain things and what the limits are. Uh, I don't know what, whether we're talking about maybe, you know, somewhere around a million dollars. But if, if we're talking about coverages that these entities already have in place and it shouldn't be an issue, but that's something we should...
That's what, then that's my question. Are we going to have them do something above and beyond whatever their insurance policy is?
Well, I don't know, do they have an insurance policy?
I know, that's what we need to, that's what my question is.
But we'll just have to inquire and find out.
Better determine what's a reasonable coverage is.
Can, uh, can I ask Mike Moore a question? Um, when we've done anything like this before, we've never had any policy like this. Have we entered into contracts with, with any streaming or radio or anything, have, have we done that? We have.
We have one last year.
Right, which was the OSN, I know, and then we also have one with Magic 95, right? Did we require them to have insurance or did we ask about any type of insurance then?
No.
Okay.
Not that it's a bad thing. I mean, you can't even do business with the state of Oklahoma.
It's also because we're going to have visiting teams come here for football. They've already contracted with their schools to do live streaming. And then they always call us to say, do we have a place in your press box July string? Norman will do it, Al's will do it, Norman will do it. And if we have a room for them, we have allowed them.
To use that.
And then we, we always pay a, as far as athletic directors, gentlemen, we always have a gentleman's agreement. If you don't fee us, we won't fee you.
Right.
So if we come to your place next year, you won't fee our radio station, we won't fee yours and so forth. But that was just always a mutual agreement.
Okay.
Yeah, I believe that we need to have in this policy some wording that states that, that reciprocal agreement is fine as long as they have a contract with their school district as well.
Yeah.
But then we come up with a question of, of insurance. We're not, we're going to force them to have insurance coverage. So that could, could become an issue.
That kind of plays into that, I mean, because if their district...
Still, this would be covered, perhaps.
Yeah, but it would be the same thing.
But they're not, yeah, they're not with the school district necessarily. They're with that radio station and that...
If XYZ radio station comes in here to do a broadcast for Norman, uh, we wouldn't have any, any recourse...
They'd have to show proof of insurance.
Unless we had, uh, had been required as a condition and we had proof of it.
But, I mean, that's what I'm saying.
If something happened while they were here to one of their employees or, you know, their equipment got damaged...
Or if, if something happened while their employee, they have a claim against their own workman's comp carrier.
Right.
If they say that is a third party, then that third party would have a claim against that radio station and that's where the insurance becomes a factor.
Through the radio station.
Through the radio station.
But they could come back and run us.
Exactly, they could come back and run us.
That's the main question.
Okay.
Is there any reason to have us review the commercials?
I don't know, I don't want to be...
You know, we're...
I don't think so, as long as we, as they stay within those stipulations.
Right.
So I'm just going to make sure that that's...
Well, I mean, they're, they're going to, if they're nearing into a contract with, so obviously they're going to want to do a whole bunch of games, so they're not going to run that risk.
I mean, like, uh, Mr. Jester pointed that, as long as they've got a reciprocal agreement with the other team. Otherwise, uh, you know, we don't, we don't want to be requiring every visiting team to contract with our, through our AD before they can do any broadcasting.
Right.
They'll, they'll be full-time, uh, kind of involved in this as opposed to otherwise. But, uh, those are all things we've got to consider though.
Right. I have one more. Um, my next thing is, if we accept a contract from a company, I don't believe that we should be able to tell them who their, who their broadcaster is.
No, I agree. I saw that too.
Yeah.
Selection of announcer?
Yeah, they select their own announcer.
If we take their contract, we need to accept.
I agree.
I think we've kind of got a good starting point going.
Ms. Ellis, be patient with us.
It's going to take us a little while. Did you get all that?
So we're going to be the groundbreakers in a bit.
That's right.
That's the one with the införderst.
We have the obvious understanding that's to be deleted.
I think it's a great assessment.
No, I think it's, I think it's very, very, you know, I mean, it's a great beginning considering, you know, we're having to pull this in from different areas and places.
Julie was doing a lot of research when I talked to her this summer about it. She was really proud.
The one, the last time I talked to her, I mean, she just absolutely had pulled this out of the air. I mean, there's absolutely nothing, nothing there. Yeah.
But, but I think it's really important because of the fact that we have different kinds of entities. Now, we have radio, we have live video, live streaming, and, you know, we don't want to get into another situation where we don't know if we have a policy that allows us to, to make this go the way we want it to go. And it's, you know, we don't want to have people without a contract in our facilities trying to broadcast, especially if there's any advertising involved.
Uh, yeah.
And that's the reason we need a policy.
Okay, and here's my second thing. Let's not, we don't want to drag this out for long, long periods of time. So, um, will we look at having a draft on it at this next one and maybe try to move this along so we can get...
We can say, uh, possible action on the next one, and then if we're not happy with it, we can table it.
I definitely think that's the thing.
I mean, there's no, yeah, there's...
Mm-hmm, no, just not, not where we can get, we want to get it so we can move forward with contracts.
Is that enough time, Ms. Ellis?
It's enough time for me to add those things that you've asked me to, yes, and to have Julie look over it. And I will refer to her, if you will allow me to do so, as well as to our checkmate.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm five G, and Mr. Moore has done us a, a little bit of legwork by, um, the question is, once we do get a policy or we have time, and of course it will be determined by the board, um, how do we do a request for proposal for broadcast rights? Um, Mr. Moore is available and he has found the OSSAA policy as a good template for us to start with. And so I'll ask Mr. Moore to be available and also share his thoughts on if we, um, when, when a time comes that the board wants to do a request for proposals, if this is a good, um, draft. I, I wrote OSSPA, I mean, no, I'm a, this is OSSAA.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. This is a championship game.
There you go.
Well, it's just a great question.
And I do want to go on the record that I am one of the very few people in this room that didn't have Ms. Ellis as a teacher.
I didn't have her either. I did.
It's probably extended your career.
I was going to say, I was thinking of getting to be too old.
Yeah, I had them when I was really early. What you have is what the OSSAA, they are the only entity that I find that has done an RFP. And it basically gives exclusive rights to a broadcasting network to do the championship series football games. They don't mess around with anything that happens during the regular season.
Can I stop you right there?
Yes.
I need the definition of an RFP.
That's a request for proposal.
And what I want to know...
And so, uh, it, they do not really exclude everybody because there are so many playoff games that go on. No entity has enough equipment to do them all. So, uh, someone here in Lawton, if we, like last year, MacArthur was at Western Heights. They did not cover that through the OSSAA entity, so, uh, you could get a request in. If you get it in, you know they're not going to cover your game, you can pay a, a fee and you can still go ahead and they'll give you permission. But they do maintain those rights to say if you can, you just have to go through the, the trail, the paper trail of getting permission, but, uh...
That's only for playoff games.
That's only for playoff games. Regular season, they don't deal with whatsoever. But from what I'm hearing, to me, the request for a proposal would be something that would be, have its foundation on whatever we come up with for a policy, because now we know what to send out and ask people to give us a proposal for. And if we want them, if we want them to give back in that proposal, you would just simply ask them, what, if anything, do you propose that you would give in return for your rights to broadcast to the lot of public schools, hopefully to the LA department?
So that, so say we have a gentleman's agreement with, let's say, Ardmore, because, I know they play them quite a bit.
Right.
Um, and it's going to be a gentleman's agreement. We would just have them sign that so that we would know that next year when we went to Ardmore over the beginning, how's that work?
We've, we haven't had anything. We've, uh, it's more or less been, I know one year that I was notified by one of our radio stations that Moore, Oklahoma was going to charge them $350. And so they notified me, I called Moore and told their LA director, basically, if you charge us $350 this year to our radio station, you're supposed to be here next year, we will fee you $350. It seems to be a wash.
Right.
And he said, let me make a call, he called me back and, and we went with that. And we didn't, I guess there's a little honor among athletic directors, but we just simply have made it, even in the conference, some of the conferences and districts we're in, we have made an agreement with the LA directors to not charge each other for broadcasting because it does get to be, you're giving me $300 this year, I'm giving it back to you next year, so it seems kind of pointless.
Well, I mean, you know, we've had, you know, Lawton has a, had a reputation of being a little bit difficult and we kind of don't want to compound any of that. We kind of want to be able to get along. Do you feel like doing something like this is going to make it where Lawton seems to be more difficult?
I, I think in, in some areas, if, if, from what I'm hearing, I would be, have to send a letter out to everybody on our schedule, like, early August or even late July and say, if you plan to livestream or broadcast at Cameron Stadium when your team visits, we need to know that so we can send you a contract and then you can give us this, 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 and this. And then when you come, you just can show up, you know we're going to be there. Because any contract we have with them is going to have to come to you for, for approval. So they'll have to get that in early.
I don't think that's, well, I was insinuating, I was insinuating if they have a contract with their entity...
Their school district, right, that's their...
Okay, if we take that, then I don't think they'll have any heartache with it.
We don't want to get involved in all that.
Because I, I did not want to end up, I had to ask them to do a contract with us to come here and broadcast.
You're asking for nothing but trouble if you try to...
Well, I don't, I don't think that's what we're asking.
Every Italian team...
No, or...
Well, that's what he's saying.
Have a contract approved by this board.
No.
Okay.
No. But the fee, what, expand a little bit on the fee, $350. So if our radio station goes up there, they're charging the radio station $350.
They're going to charge our radio station $350.
What do we charge down here, anything?
We don't, uh, charge them unless they use, if they were to hook up and want to broadcast using, say, the, uh, the Cameron telephone line, then we would charge them, we have normally charged them $100 because we're covering our cost of using their long distance at Cameron. Uh, but presently, most of them come down and they, they just use the Wi-Fi and the hotspots and they don't go into the line, so we don't charge. However, if you do charge us, we will reciprocate and charge you.
There you go, that's what I'm saying. So, so rolling back, what we're saying is, all we have to do is contact them to make sure that their school, that they're contracted through their school, and then we're good.
Right.
So how are we going to know that?
Well, when they schedule...
I, I can, uh, send them a letter and ask them, would you please forward us your contract with your school?
Because they have to ask you if there's room and availability.
They always call and demand because once in a while we get someone who wants to do radio, but then they have a secondary group, it may be a student organization that wants to livestream. Well, for some of them, we have to say, we have one room for visiting broadcast. It's not big enough for your radio and your livestream, so, uh, they'll sometimes say, is there a place you can set us up? So sometimes we, on the visitor's side at the top, there is electric and we set them up a table there and they may broadcast their radio or their livestream from there.
That's another point that I'd like to bring up. In our, to, our particular facility, as far as football business at Cameron, um, we only have enough room for one of the broadcasts. So it would be difficult for us to approve a contract for both radio and livestream, in my mind, unless we did set them up on the other side.
Right, and when they call, well, we just tell them that, you know, we don't have room for both, you're going to have to choose.
But I'm talking about those RFPs.
What if we have two people that want to livestream?
Well...
To me, you would have to take the better contract if they're going to have...
Right, that's why...
I'm going to look at who's offering me the most.
That's...
And, um, I'm, I'm going to take the guy who wants to give me the most for the room.
And so we're going to put out an RFP for football right away, as soon as we can. And I'm asking what we do as quick as possible.
Yes.
Maybe even ahead of the final policy based on information that we've come up with tonight. Because those, that needs to be done soon. Those, we need to figure out who's going to do this so they can do their thing and get ready. That's just my opinion.
I agree.
But we've got to, we're, we're going to put it out for each individual school, is that correct? Individual?
It's not a district-wide, but an individual?
I think we have to put it out by school.
Okay, good.
So we, oh, okay, I see what you're trying to ask.
Because, I mean, even our radio broadcast...
And then each sport, like, we'll probably do it again for basketball, we're going to do it again for baseball, because there's interest. And so I think we need to do it for each sport at, at the appropriate time and determine what it is. What do you think about that?
You look like you have a concern about that.
Well, because I know that with live streaming, we'll have people that, you have, we have football, soccer, baseball, uh, basketball for all three schools, that, uh, they could even do wrestling.
Yeah, I was going to say wrestling, especially.
We get to where we'll be spending a lot of time doing requests for proposals for this sport and that sport. I think most entities that want to do live streaming want to do that year.
Oh, okay.
Rather than do...
But if they decide, they pick and choose.
Yeah, but if they have to do that...
And let's just say they decide they don't want to do girls' basketball.
Well, I think what we have to do is if we send out a request, we need them to indicate and we can put a, you know...
Which sports they're going to do.
If you're going to do it...
They're going to do it by school and not by sport.
By school, by sport.
By school, by sport.
Oh, by school, by, okay, yeah.
But I think most people are going to want to have something upfront so that they prepare for a year rather than I got to do another response later.
Right, I mean, I agree with that, but we also want to have that opportunity, if that's not a sport that they intend to broadcast, that someone else can come in and do that sport.
Right.
What about the terms of the contract as far as the length goes?
Yeah, this one goes to 2000.
Because...
We've done all our broadcasts in the past and, and the schools that I've talked to that do it generally give out a five-year contract, renewable each year, renegotiated after the fifth year.
So the contract terms are just renewed, they're not changed, but you still have to renew them and you can terminate them any time.
Right. Right.
We have to do that because we're a public school.
I think that's, we'd be the way to do that. So is there a way that you can put out the RFP prior to the, the policy being approved? Do you have enough information?
I think I've got enough to get, get a start on it, and I'll have to.
Bring it back, what is it?
Bring that back to you.
Okay. Is there anything we wanted absolutely stricken from this?
Well, there's, there's a lot of this that doesn't pretend.
Yeah. Oh, yeah. This is for sure.
We don't wanna, I don't think we wanna spend a bunch of time going through.
I don't think so.
I think we're actually asking you, when you wanna do it, what sports you wanna do it, what schools you wanna do it for, and what do you plan to give to local school athletes?
And there's, there's a part in here that I think needs to be in there for sure, and it's any prospective contract, and must further agree that Norristown Rocks brand new contract, other local television providers and/or, you know, radio, they still telecast brief, brief compilations of highlights from these activities.
Right.
You know, but I think that kinda stuff needs to go in there.
Oh, I agree, yeah. Yeah.
Yeah, we don't wanna alienate the.
Right. Go. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Moore.
We wanted you to have something to do. Before you retire.
First thing to do.
All right. Dr. Deacon, your report?
My report, I just have two items. Item six A is consideration and vote to elect or not to elect following his new members of the Board of Directors for Oklahoma Public School and Invested in the Local Cooperative, five-five K zero-zero-one. Sean McDaniel, COSA, Supernetta Mustang Public Schools, two thousand seventeen to twenty, term. Roger Adair, OASBO, Association of School Business Work, OASBO. A Director of Finance and Moore-Norman Technology Center, two thousand seventeen twenty, term. Sean Heim, OSSBA, Executive Director, Oklahoma State School Board Association, two thousand seventeen twenty-one, term. Don Ty, OSSBA, Board Member, Woodville, Talaga, Talala Public Schools, two seventeen twenty, term. This is the organization we're involved in, and we do this every year, and so I recommend that we adopt that.
I vote that we approve.
You move? I'll, I'll second.
Just as long as my name.
Whatever.
Ms. Claude Felter?
Yes.
Ms. Nywar?
Yes.
Dr. Bridges?
Yes.
Mr. Jester?
Yes. I'm six B. I have no announcements. Mr., um, Mr. Suddles was my big announcement. We just have him come in personally.
There you go.
Awesome deal.
Great. Consent agenda?
I didn't have anything I wanted.
Nothing for me?
Nothing?
I'm ready for hurdle, the consent agenda.
Second.
Call roll, please.
Ms. Claude Felter?
Yes.
Ms. Nywar?
Yes.
Dr. Bridges?
Yes.
Mr. Jester?
Yes.
Okay. Um, I need a second session. My only question was, on our UVA, that most of it is all granted, right? In our general funding, direct accounting, current.
Two thousand, let's see, cohort number thirteen?
Granted.
Yes, cohort fourteen is not.
Okay. Okay, I'm sorry.
No, there's potential, that's a board member.
Anyone need executive session? Thank you.
Yes.
No.
Okay.
No. Your personnel report?
Under item twelve, I have item twelve A, vote to approve the certified and support personnel reports as indicated on item eight A.
Move for approval.
Second. Call roll, please.
Ms. Claude Felter?
Yes.
Ms. Nywar?
Yes.
Dr. Bridges?
Yes.
Mr. Jester?
Yes.
No new business? The next regular board meeting will be Tuesday, June twenty-seventh. At five PM. Do we need any additional? Anyone need any additional meetings? Any board announcements?
No. I'll check that date.
Hey, Mr. Jester?
I'm ready for journey.
Second.
Call roll, please.
Ms. Claude Felter?
Yes.
Ms. Nywar?
Yes.
Dr. Bridges?
Yes.
Mr. Jester?
Yes.
All right. Thank you.
I was just wondering what happened before.
It's real fun in the basketball. Second.
Take care.